I'd like to call this meeting to order. Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Haggard?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Foggins?
Here.
Mr. Shindor?
Here.
Mrs. Bruson?
Here.
At this time, I would like all the students that we're going to recognize this evening from the All District Choir, All State Choir, and the All State Band to please come up front and you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then I want you to stay up here when we're finished.
I'd like the whole room.
Yeah, they really did these things.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you guys hang out up here for a second. Maybe make yourselves choir and band and all this.
Cool kids over here.
I guess I am sectioned.
Yeah.
This is orchestra.
Orchestra.
On behalf of the St. Joseph's School District Fine Arts Department, it is my distinct privilege to speak to you, Dr. Zerwanka, our downtown administration, the Board of Education, and our patrons this evening about a group of outstanding students in the St. Joseph's School District. These students have auditioned for and made the All District Choir, the All District Band, the All District Orchestra, and the Missouri All State Choir. This achievement highlights the extreme talent, intelligence, perseverance, and hard work of these fine students. It is also a testament to the dedication and hard work of our district-wide music staff in the St. Joseph's School District. Preparing for and making these district ensembles is accomplished through long hours spent outside the classroom in lessons and individual practice. This is all done in addition to the quality work that happens each school day in our music classes here in the district. Students and teachers meet early in the morning before school, after school, and in many instances, late in the evenings to pursue this goal. Finally, this achievement is a great honor for these students. Over 40 school districts with nearly 1,000 students in northwest Missouri pursue this goal each year. The St. Joseph's School District has a rich tradition of securing large numbers of quality students in their respective district and state ensembles. Teachers of these students include Paul Hart, Daniel Gerhart, Kevin Griffin, David Groth, Chad Lippincott, Judy Long, Roy Maxwell, Joseph Schreiman, Jeff Ciosoco, Jeannie Weisenborn, and Amber Welter. The accompanists at the high schools include Cheryl Herman, Beth McClanahan, and Brenda Foster. Eighty-two students from the St. Joseph's Schools District have secured a spot in the district band, choir, or orchestra. Of the eighty-two students represented, I will attempt to call the names of those in attendance today. And if I leave somebody out, you let me know. We're going to start with district band. Anna Eaton from Spring Garden. Raise your hand, guys, so she can...
Here you go, Anna. Congratulations. Good job.
Anna Blacher...Blatcher, excuse me. Those are the students from our middle schools, starting with the high school jazz ensemble, Ben Hardy.
There you are.
Thank you. Andrew Kirby. Moving to the honor band now, that was Cyrus and Ben again. And Andrew again. We also have one student that made the All District Orchestra this year for the first time, and I've been in the district 21 years, I think that's the first one that I'm aware of.
Twenty-eight, his first time.
Nellie Dyer.
How do you call me?
By the way, Nellie's a freshman, so congratulations.
We've embarrassed her.
Moving to the All District Choir.
Do you want to help me?
I think I have the order.
Oh, great.
Jennifer Cobb. Lauren Bouchard. Allison Fields. Kristen Bryant. Josh Proke. Aaron King. Andrew Kirby again was also in the district. Grant Shivington. Webster Dyer. And Wesley Sisk was also in the district. Are there any students that are here this evening that I did not call their name for district choir, or district band, or district orchestra? I also have one other recognition that I'd like to bring to your attention this evening. At this time, we have had district...excuse me, state choir auditions, and the St. Joseph's School District has five members to the All State Choir this year. From Benton High School, Mitchell Gurman is a second alternate on bass. I don't believe he's... Having musical rehearsal at Benton. Webster Dyer from Central High School. Grant Pope from Central High School. Lauren Bouchard from Central High School. And Abigail Widener from Lafayette High School.
That was all-state?
All-state, yes.
Cool.
The All State Choirs and bands will perform at the annual Missouri Music Educators Association Conference at the Tanter Resort on the Lake of the Ozarks on Saturday, January 31, 2015. All State Band and Orchestra results will not be finalized until December 6, and I would be happy to come back and report to you at a later meeting on students who make the All State Band and Orchestra. Last, I would like to thank the administration and the Board of Education for recognizing these students tonight and supporting our music programs in the St. Joseph's School District. Through your support, music education is able to play a major role in the development of these fine young individuals.
Should we just give the rest to the teachers and bring it to the kids?
Thank you, guys.
You're allowed to sit down.
Good job.
Or go where?
Well done.
our excellent principals?
I can talk about a lot of excellent principals. Tonight, we'll talk about two. You know, a lot of people believe that if you were to be named the principal of a brand-new school, you pretty much got it made. Because a lot of people believe that we took...we closed Paul's school and just moved it over to Carden Park, and we just moved Coleman over to Oak Grove, we just moved noise. They're really, guys, it really doesn't work that way. All of the people that were involved in that process know, it just doesn't work that cleanly. There is an incredible amount of work that goes into starting off a new school. When it comes to...our principals actually got involved really early when it was time to start thinking about what are going to be the names of the schools we have principals involved, what are going to be the colors, what are going to be the mascots. And then they had to worry about, can I get all the furniture that the teachers need, and can I get brand-new schedules? I mean, you've got to start from scratch and create schedules. You have to look at a lot of the...once you got into the building, there were a lot of areas that still needed work with construction, so they had to continue to work with maintenance and work with the architects. So there was an incredible amount of work that took place in terms of getting a school set up and ready to go on time the first day of school. And we have two principals that did an excellent job with that. I want to first talk about Lacy Adams. Can you come up here? Lacy Adams was our principal at Humboldt Elementary. When we began to look at Carden Park, there are really a couple of obstacles when you're a principal. You're either...if you're the principal of one of the largest schools in town, that's an obstacle. If you are a principal at one of our higher impoverished schools, title schools, there can be challenges. And when we began to look at Carden Park, we realized that it was going to hold two of those obstacles. It was going to be our largest title elementary school in the city. And we began to look at who could fill that role, and Lacy was that person. And I know you all know that since she started there, she's come to you and spoken to you a few times about the progress and the work that she's done with our community agencies and getting services for mental health needs and for counseling and to help and support this school and these kiddos. And I just want to congratulate her tonight. She has invested an incredible amount of time and energy and work to...with her staff to get this school up and running and going. So, Lacy, thank you.
Honored to have the opportunity, and it's been an adventure for sure. And the next time we do it, I have a handbook.
Listen, Wideners, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Otto, would you go up to the podium? Numerous Oak Grove staff members here, they all know what I mean when I say it is an incredible amount of work to get a school organized and put together, get a PTA organized, get the registrations done, get your rooms set up, make sure it got on the curriculums. Would you all agree?
Yeah.
Would you all agree that this guy is a master at helping you?
Yeah.
When we started this process, we got a lot of communication from our parent group, parent organization, who were asking us if we would take a very serious look at Mr. Otto for the new building. And I think that in itself is a testament to the kind of guy that he is when your parents are begging, "Please, let him stay with us." We're moving and we're happy, but we really want Mike Otto to come. And that process started early on. One of the things that Mike has had to do is, you all know, we have a partnership with the Y at Oak Grove, their preschool program. It was something that was in a long time of the making, to design a program that we could help support parents who needed childcare services along with preschool services and to bring those two entities together. And it was an incredible amount of work to make that happen. And I can tell you that over and over, I believe that if Mr. Hartley was in the room, he would tell you that Mr. Otto has been incredibly supportive in making that process work. And so, Mike, we appreciate the effort and the work that you've done.
Thanks. I wanted to be very kind, and it is a privilege and an honor to be before you this evening. I want you to know, in my 29 years as an educator, this is the most exciting time I've ever experienced. It hasn't changed. But I want you to know too, that I work with a staff that's second to none, and it's easy to come to work every day. And you all need to know that these folks just do an incredible job. And opening a new school is exciting, it's challenging, you're right. But people like Brian supporting you, Chris Silcock, Rick Hardigan, Mark Cogan, it took a whole family to get this thing opened up. And so, these folks did it, and I got to watch. And yeah, it was tough, I was there, I was watching, so it was just great. So, Oak Grove is paving the way for exciting challenges yet to come. I'm just excited about it. Thank you for this honor tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Shindor, Parkway Outdoor Reading Library.
Yes, so a little over a year ago, the Parkway PTA and principal and staff members began to look at the potential of using some of the outdoor space to create what they're calling an outdoor reading library. And so, the PTA, in conjunction with the staff, wrote a grant to the National LOES Grant, I believe they called the Toolbox for Education Grant. And LOES, an organization nationally, looks at around 1,000 schools per year that they can help support with funding to help provide additional student spaces. And so, the PTA and the staff wrote a grant and asked for some funding and some support to design what they're calling an outdoor reading library. So if you've ever...if you've gone past Parkway out front in their kind of their cul-de-sac area, there's a new space out there. It was a collaboration between PTA, the staff, and even LOES and volunteers who came out, designed the space, got it organized. The local LOES brought out the materials, they helped get those set in place. It is really a very neat place. If you were to ask the principal, and you can't do a minute, are the students using that space, he can tell you they love it. It's outdoor, it's different from their classroom, they can take their books, they go out into the shade trees, and they can use that space. And so, a very nice outdoor reading space for the students of Parkway. So, Brian Owens, if you could come up here.
I just want to say that I also have staff that's second to none. And I'd like to say, I brought some teachers with me tonight. Emily Howell, Glenn Deschawn, Laura Techwood, stand up. Brian Smith, and then our PTA president, Leslie Pope. We appreciate all your support and letting us go forward with the project, and it's been a great space so far.
All right. And I'd like to present this to you. This is a certificate of achievement. It says, "On behalf of the St. Joseph's Chamber of Commerce and the Diplomats Club in recognition of your successes and service to our business community." Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Debbie, audience participation?
Mr. Todd Prophet would like to address the board.
Thank you for your time tonight. It's been a big time. We've had a big victory, men to three. It was an amazing process. It was written so that people would simply walk in there and vote, "Yes, yes, yes," and that was purposeful. We were able to identify early that we needed a no vote on it. We hit the target audience, we identified the issue, worked real well. And again, I want to show appreciation, thank the school board, Dr. Zerwanka for your support on this, men to three, thank you so much. Also, last month, I received this note from Dr. Zerwanka on October 17, and it was very encouraging. It said, it was basically sent to all staff, and it said we were going to have our four focus points. One was student achievement, great. In district rapport, communication remains top priority for us. Community engagement, we're going to engage community members. And the levy, I was very encouraged to see that. I'm really excited about us pushing forward on this levy, because without money, we dry Again, I was somewhat concerned last Friday when I received an email, again, speaking of basically about how the Meet and Confir Committee has met, again, behind closed doors without open session, which is, in my belief, a violation of Missouri sunshine law. We should be having these meetings so staff can attend those meetings, have input, no surveys per cent, no input from the staff. With that, we have our four issues. Recommendation number one, again, where is the sunshine on this? Why weren't we notified? Why are we doing this so early? For every teacher, recommendation number one, $250 for every teacher to use the classroom supplies, that's a great idea. Teachers spend a lot of money, we're always dipping into our pocket. That was about $750 in the whole last year, that's okay. We sign up for this occupation with that in mind. What I don't want to see on this, when we come time for a bond, is I don't want to see the public saying, "Ooh, you know, where did that money go?" I hope that controls are put in place, strict controls, to guide every dollar that's in there. How many little old ladies have to pay their tax bill to pay the $250? Again, I'm accustomed to dipping into my pocket, I would never ask for that, but I appreciate the chance to possibly get some teachers some money to help out in the classroom. Recommendation number two, a 2% salary increase clause step for the staff of the St. Joseph's School District. Bo Muster's not here. How are we able to make these budget recommendations without a CFO? I don't understand this. It talks about how we're able to look at the budget, how we're able to do these things. We don't have a CFO. Kim O'Beane's wonderful. She's done an incredible job, but we don't have a CFO right now. We should be waiting on all these decisions. Why are we pushing into this so fast? I looked all over the state, I couldn't find one state, one district in the state of Missouri that has ever pushed this early for an increase. Ever. Nowhere. We'd be the first one. I mean, we just finished going on a new contract. This legislative session is not even session right now. Let's wait. Let's make our first focus that levy. Let's get that levy passed, and then let's push the ball forward. Recommendation number three, a comprehensive salary index for all administrators, remove all stipends. Are we going to remove them, or are we going to roll them in? If we're going to roll them in, that's a problem. We just talked about back up here, our levy, we're going to form a focus group, and we're going to do polling. Have we done polling? Have we asked the community, "Is this a hot issue with you? Would this keep you from voting no on this?" If it is, maybe we need to do something different. I know from my experience, that's one of the big hot issues right now, is the stipend issue. And I understand, I'm not saying our administrators aren't worth it, but we're going to have to look at a different methodology. At the same time also, for teachers, we lost $5,000. My wife and I lost $10,000. $10,000. That was our career ladder. Why weren't these efforts made on our behalf? Why weren't efforts made before on the Meet and Confir Committee about the calendar? Why not? We added five days last year, no compensation. Again, I commend MST, they're the Meet and Confir Agent for this year, that's great. Again, it is a collective bargaining agreement, this is not a collective bargaining agreement, but we probably need to change the language in our board policy. It is not collective bargaining. Again, thank you for your time.
Mr. Jeff Leek would like to address the board.
Thank you for the time here. I always try to come and be as positive as I can, but I...in a way, I'm just confused. And along with Friday's email, which I do think the intent is good, and I'm glad that we're starting to talk about those salary increases. It did catch me a little bit off-guard, a concern that has already been brought to me. And by the way, my name's Jeff Leek, NEA at-large representative, so I might say a few things similar to what Todd says, but I speak to a lot of different teachers, they come up and speak to me. One of the concerns is, is this levy is looming just right there. What will happen if this doesn't pass? Will this then go into a freeze? Will we lose any step that goes on? Or will we lose staff members? And, you know, 2%, hey, I'll take it, but if that means that we lose one person in my building, I don't want it. So, I don't know, with the Meet and Confir, they do their thing, but I just don't know those answers to those questions. I want to reiterate something I talked about in the spring. I am now making, it's taken me five years to get back to my 2010 salary with that loss of career ladder. And that's taken the time. I've achieved that mostly through my steps from year to year. Again, if we get rid of stipends, that nasty word that's as bad as some four-letter words in this town in certain places, are we rolling them in, or are we getting rid of them? I think our administrators, you know, most of them do a fantastic job, and I want them to get as much as they can, as well as I want teachers to. But the last time I got a 2% increase in salary, I lost that EOP. And when I lost the other $3,500, which came out to be about 8% of my...8 or 9% of my salary, I did get a 1% raise that following year. But to me, it's not what it's called, it's pretty much how much I can take home to my family. With that being said, the gap is simple. I know there's efforts to tie the percentage together, so if we give a 2% to the teachers, we can give a 2% to the administrators, and everybody kind of rises together. But we're tying that together after only one has really risen over the last four or five years. That is a concern. On a personal note, and as an NEA representative, I have seen some sunshine documents, and one was over tuition reimbursement. And I'm speaking on myself personally, and the frustration to many teachers. The end of this month, I will finally pay my student loan. I've paid on my student loan for 15 years. Many have paid on their student loans for probably longer, some are still paying. It is just a part of life, and it's frustrating. Looking at some of those people that had reimbursement, I understand that there's areas of high need. I understand, as a history teacher, I'm not one of them, and I accept that. It's frustrating to see many have already left the district. I would like the board maybe to consider doing a little research, if we can tie people to a commitment, if we do pay for their education to get them certified, they owe us some time. Kind of like a doctor who does that, Hartland does that. You know, they'll help pay if they give people time. Because that's frustrating for current teachers who are loyal to this district. Like I said, tens of thousands... Like I said, tens of thousands of dollars have already left the district. And I know we have to do what we do at the time to get people to fill those positions. One thing I do, I am concerned about, or another item I'm concerned about is, a lot of those alternative certifications took place in buildings where there was high turnover. And I'm not sure that we completely address the reason of the high turnover. Why are so many teachers leaving certain buildings? In the past, in the past, we've had buildings that have had an abnormal large amount of turnover. You know, what is the cause of that? Wouldn't it be cheaper to deal with that problem than it would be to continue to try to get new people in that we train and put time in, and not just through paying for alternative certification, but all the professional development before they move on? In my opinion, I think we, and I know we had a building in the past that lost a lot of, had a high turnover. In my opinion, we have another one right now. And I think we need to act on that before we're trying to replace teachers all the time. Thank you.
Betsy Bean would like to address the board.
Hello, I'm Betsy Bean, the St. Joe MST A region president. And first of all, I'd like to read what Todd said, and I'd like to thank everyone in the community for their support in the defense, or the defeat of Amendment Three. That was huge, okay? And that being said, with so much stress to get that amendment defeated, I think there was lots of stuff that looked over that's going to get in the St. Joe School District, and I just want to bring some of that up, because sometimes we hear the gloom and the doom, and we don't hear the fun stuff. Here's just a few, and there's way more than this, this is just the ones I could get hands on real quick, okay? I know that down at Hyde, Mrs. Boyer took time to read to every grade level, to provide each teacher with an extra break during the week of parent-teacher conferences, and also provided refreshments for the teachers. That said, we also have a group, or we also have a lot of teachers that went above and beyond to ensure that every parent in their elementary schools had the opportunity to meet with their teacher during PTA conferences, even if that meant a Saturday, or at 9:00 PM, or 7:00 in the morning. We had a lot of teachers that did that, and that's awesome, and I think that should be commended. We have a group of students right now in Washington, DC for the weekend, I don't know if they're back or not, but Washington DC with some teachers. I mean, that's pretty cool, I think. I like, the libraries have been restored to full funding again this year, and that increases students' abilities to access literature, and I think that's kudos to the board for doing that last year. We also, Jessica Carroll is a train the trainer for the Pathways Bondings Program, and is training other elementary teachers in this, which is, you know, our teachers teaching other teachers. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all the military people, current and past, for their service. I'm not sure if we're going to do that later, but if possible, could all the people stand? Because I appreciate that if anyone here has been, stays. Those are just a few of the things, and I just think sometimes we get so overwhelmed in the doom and gloom, but it's important to remember the good stuff. So, thank you for allowing me to address the board, and thank you for all you do for us.
All right, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the agenda. Second. Any discussion? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruceman?
Yes.
Okay, for the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed?
I would like to pull, uh, poll 5.10 budget adjustments.
Any other items? All right, that's polled. Now? I move to accept the consent agenda, may I just poll later?
Second.
Any discussion? Debbie, please call the roll.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruceman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
All right, moving on. 6.1, refinishing business.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually, it's just one item off of the budget adjustments. If you look in your package, you'll see that Ken had put in at our discussion on Friday at our committee meeting, the Chromebooks for the middle schools. They are still discussing that, so we are actually just postponing that. They will be bringing something to us in December.
Yes.
So, actually, just that one item in the adjustments needs to be polled, and then everything else I think would be so fine. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, is that a motion?
It is.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to, to accept the budget adjustment excluding the $600,000 for the Chromebooks.
Correct.
All right, any discussion? All right, Debbie?
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruceman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, 6.1 is refinishing of Benton High School gym floor.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Zawanka. To best of my knowledge, it has been about 20 years since we have refinished Benton's gym floors. Shortly needs to be done. On October 21st, had a pre-bid meeting, which is advertised that you, we recommend you strongly attend, unfortunately neither of the bidders attended that meeting. At that meeting, we were going to discuss the tight timeline. After we received the bids, we received two bids, one local, one from a company in Kansas City. I contacted both companies to discuss with them the timeline. The company in Kansas City is called Acne Flooring, and I told them that they had approximately two weeks to do this over Christmas break. Talked to them twice, and they confirmed that they cannot do the work in that type of a timeframe. They said they needed approximately 28 days to do the job. Chris Kadoo, who also did the floors at Central, and under similar conditions, he confirmed that he could do the work. Therefore, we recommend that you accept the bid from Chris Kadoo, even though it is $806 higher. I appreciate your recommendation, your hard work. I make a motion that we accept the bid.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm wondering, usually this kind of work's done in the summer, isn't it? I mean, is there a reason it wasn't done, what, this summer?
Well, we just, we were talking with the, the staff of Benton, they were hoping to get it done over Christmas break. I think they're anxious to get it done, and we've seen that it can happen. So, it was going to come close also to the end of this, the fiscal year, so we thought, well, if we've done it before, let's go ahead and do it over Christmas break.
Any, any other questions? Debbie, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruceman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Playground equipment at Hosea.
Okay, as you may remember, at the August board meeting, the board accepted the recommendation and awarded the project at Hosea to Afco in the amount of $76,003. Shortly after we awarded the project, I was, I had a conversation with Kevin Carroll, the principal at Hosea, and he'd been talking with, or the PTA had been talking with him. They wanted to contribute some additional money to put in a little bit more equipment. They felt that, you know, this is maybe their one-time shot at getting this done, and was hoping that they could contribute that. And so, they talked with the, it's going to be the installer, for another $4,997, they get the equipment that they think that will complete the project, which will bring the total of this project to $81,000, and so, we'll bring it back to you for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Silcock, appreciate your hard work on our elementary schools. I make a motion that we accept the bid.
Second.
Kudos to the PTA.
Right, and so there, the PTA is paying that last $5,000?
Correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, $3 last.
Any questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruceman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next item is the speech-language pathology therapy services.
Good evening, board, and Dr. Zawanka, thank you for your consideration of this request. As we work through in your committee meetings, due to some circumstances outside the district's control, we are, we have vacancies for speech-language pathologists. We have done due diligence to seek full-time employees, but we have not received a single applicant at this time. So, we put out to bid a request for those services through staffing agencies that do this type of work. We received back three bids, which you have. I would suggest and recommend that we accept the lowest bidder, which is supplemental healthcare. And through our contract with them, I believe not only are they the lowest bidder, but I believe they will do a very good job for the district. They've had lots of experience working with other school districts, so if you would please accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Question?
Just a comment, and that is, Denise, thank you very much for your hard work in this area. I know speech pathology is a very, very difficult area to find certificated individuals, and particularly at the salary level that we pay. And you're constantly looking for a way to provide wonderful services for children, and this is, this is a great innovative way to do it, and I commend you for finding that, and for the discussion that we had at the Personnel and Finance meeting regarding this very topic, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Dr. Cogan, I appreciate those comments. There is a national and state chronic shortage of speech-language pathologists, so this is a way to make sure our students get what they need, and I'm confident the supplemental healthcare will come through for us, and our students will be taken care of, so I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think we asked a lot at the other meetings, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneethen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruceman?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Zawanka.
Yes, I would just echo what was said earlier about just thanking the board for, you know, allowing the teachers to have at least $250 classroom supply money for next year. I know they appreciate that, and it gives supplies back in that classroom that those teachers have been paying for. A couple of things to update you on. One, we did some intruder training today, we had a great day of professional development and across the district, and working towards our goals for the year, but we had some intruder training today. This week, we have the Coach of the Year banquet on Wednesday night. Next week, on next Thursday, we'll kick off the basketball jamboree, so that is right around the corner, as basketball season is ready to get started. And again, we're continuing to work on attendance across the district. Our goal is to be on track to the APR, and this goal, you know, allows us to, prepare us to accomplish all of our goals. But just to share with you, our goal of 90% of the students attending 90% of the time. Last year at this point, we had 86.5% of St. Joseph School District students attending 90% of the time, as, at this point. This year, we have 87.9%, so we're up almost one and a half percent towards that goal. And so, we have several goals in regards to graduation rate and attendance, but for our APR huddle, they're doing a great job to meet those goals, and we will continue to monitor those. Last thing I have is just our nutrition update. We had National School Lunch Week last month, and breakfast participation is up to 120,028 breakfast meals. That's an increase of over 10,500 meals from last month. And lunch participation is up to 171,413 meals for the month, and that's an increase of 14,477 meals from the previous month. So, we're continuing to get that, the word out to families, and being able to allow them to eat, and just receive the health and nutrition system. So, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Next item is future meetings and events. Do you have any questions on those? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Debbie, please call the roll.